Called to order, January 21st, 2025. Welcome to our budget meeting. In accordance with Policy 1-6.9, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, Mr. Bob May will participate in this evening's meeting by phone due to him recovering from surgery. And he's recovering well, just to add that too. Tonight, we have a present—yes, sir. Tonight, we have a presentation of proposed fiscal year 2026 school operating budget, fiscal years 2026 through 2030 capital improvement plan, and fiscal year 2026 school nutrition fund budget. Dr. Pennecoff. You're on.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Ikembeary, and we're glad to have Chairman May with us this evening too, and school board members, thank you for being here with us. It is my pleasure to present the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget tonight for your consideration. I have learned since my appointment in July that the tradition of excellence is not just a saying here in Hanover County. It is a mission, and one that I have seen in action every day. From classroom instruction to transportation service, to the cleaning of our schools, we have a dedicated team of faculty and staff who are committed to providing the highest quality education and supports for our students. Each year, the budget is an opportunity for us to invest in this important work. I am confident that this proposed budget places the highest priority on doing just that, supporting our students and those who faithfully serve them each and every day. Tonight, we will discuss the following: the budget development process, some of our tremendous accomplishments as a school division over the past year, and the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Mrs. Terri Stone will then share with you an overview of our budget, the school nutrition fund, and the proposed five-year capital improvement plan, before outlining the next steps in this important process. First, let's discuss the steps that we've taken to get here tonight. This process is an extension of our philosophy of involving our school board members, our faculty and staff, our families, our county funding partners, and many other important stakeholders. From the dedicated public hearings this fall for the general public, to engaging meetings with our school administrators to learn more about the needs in their schools, to our budget exercise at the November 25th work session, in which you, as school board members, shared your own priorities, this has been a meaningful development process. We are deeply grateful for the internal and external stakeholders, employees, administrators, parents, advisory committees, school board members, the Hanover County Board of Supervisors, the Hanover County Government Administration and Staff, and many others who have been engaged in this process from the beginning. As Team Hanover County Public Schools, we work alongside one another in the best interest of our students, staff, and the school community. Before we dive into the budget, it's important to look back at the past year and remember some of the great moments and accomplishments that our school community has experienced. We do not do this life-changing work for the awards or for the recognition. Our passion for serving our community's most precious resource extends far beyond receiving any accolades. There is a beauty, however, when the work of a teacher inside a classroom, or the efforts of a team, or the dedication of an individual are acknowledged and celebrated. It reminds us of the impact we have on shaping lives. Over the past year, our school community has come together in remarkable ways, demonstrating resilience, creativity, and a commitment to excellence. These moments of triumph, whether big or small, are a testament to the collective effort of our educators, our staff, our students, and families. It is only fitting that we begin with one of our teachers, Mr. Travis Dodd's, a science teacher at Atlee High School. He was the first Milken Educator Award recipient in Hanover County history, receiving the esteemed Oscar of Teaching Award at a school-wide assembly in March. The event brought Governor Glenn Youngkin and the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. Lisa Coons, to Atlee to honor Mr. Dodd's with one of the premier awards for educators in the United States. Along with a $25,000 check, the recognition comes with additional professional learning and networking opportunities for Mr. Dodd's as he joins a group of the best of the best across the country. This summer, HCPS earned the status as a top employer for military veterans in Virginia. We received certification from the Virginia Values Veterans Program, and as part of the program, we work with the Virginia Department of Veteran Services and other strategic partners to support Virginia's veterans. This is something we have a long history of doing, especially through the meaningful Veterans Day performances and celebrations that our schools host each year. At those Veterans Day performances, our students' musical abilities are on full display. As I'm sure you have experienced during your time on the school board, we have many talented students and music instructors in our schools, from our elementary schools all the way through high school. It is no wonder that for the 12th consecutive year, Hanover County Public Schools was named a Best Community for Music Education by the National Association of Music Merchants. This is a coveted status, and we are one of only 25 school divisions in Virginia to achieve it. Well done, HCPS. On my 10th day as Interim Superintendent of Schools, I had the great pleasure of joining hundreds of members of Ashland and greater Hanover community to officially cut the ribbon on our first new school in the county since 2009, Ashland Elementary School. Since that momentous day in August, Ashland Elementary has quickly become a place of joy and learning, while fostering a strong sense of community among students, staff, and families. The vibrant halls are filled with curiosity and collaboration, as educators inspire young minds and students embrace new opportunities to learn and grow. From its state-of-the-art facilities to the dedicated team of professionals who make it all happen, Ashland Elementary stands as a testament to our shared commitment to excellence in education. As we will discuss shortly, we are excited to continue to invest in the future of our school facilities, and the wonder of Ashland Elementary inspires us in this work. HCPS has another unique claim this year. We are home to the top teacher in the Commonwealth of Virginia, Mrs. Avanti Yamamoto, a math teacher at Atlee High School, was named the 2025 Virginia Teacher of the Year in May at a special ceremony hosted by the governor on Capitol Square. For those of you who have had the opportunity to meet or listen to Mrs. Yamamoto, you know that she radiates positivity and passion for both math and her students. She's determined to show all of her students in the world that high-level math is not scary and that they can achieve great things. We are proud to have Mrs. Yamamoto among our faculty as she inspires her students, colleagues, and now, those across the Commonwealth. Mrs. Yamamoto remains in the running for the National Teacher of the Year, and we wish her all the best in her efforts to become the fourth Virginia teacher to receive the country's top teaching honor. Over the course of this year, Mrs. Yamamoto is serving as an ambassador for public education and Hanover County Public Schools alike, and what a story she has to tell. The story of Hanover County Public Schools is a team that prioritizes what matters most: our students and empowering them to succeed long beyond their time in our schools. They are our Y, and our team of roughly 2,500 faculty and staff worked tirelessly to make that happen. As you know, our convocation theme this year was the Olympics, and a celebration of all the members of the team who worked together to serve our students. This team is vast and united. Our team of faculty and staff is a group whose work I've seen firsthand as impacting the lives of our students for the better. It truly takes every person—from our bus drivers, to the nurses, to counselors, teachers, and administrators, to the front office staff and every position in between—to accomplish our goal of empowering confident and productive lifelong learners. While we are home to these top educators, to new learning environments, to the highest quality music education, and more, what distinguishes Hanover County Public Schools is our dedicated and talented people, and it's my honor to stand here tonight to both thank them for their work and to propose ways to further support them. I have shared this data with you in the past, but I believe it's a good reminder that with your support through the budget and otherwise, we remain leaders in the region and across the Commonwealth. We have the highest percentage of fully accredited schools in the region. Our on-time graduation rate is one of the highest in the state, and is above 95% for the 12th year in a row. And our students outperform state SOL averages, including with the highest pass rates in math among Virginia's largest school divisions. While this data does not tell the full story of the magic that takes place each day in our schools, it does offer a snapshot and reassurance that this work is making a difference. The development and adoption of the budget serves as a landmark opportunity each year to invest in this work, and like everything we do, our comprehensive plan guides us in crafting, proposing, and adopting the budget. Specifically, as it relates to the budget, our comprehensive plan states that we will prioritize and allocate operational and fiscal resources to meet the unique and complex needs of students, employees, families, and our schools. While much work will be done between now and the adoption of this budget this spring, I trust that you will see that this proposed budget accomplishes that goal. One of the key determinants of the budget each year is the state budget. The governor's proposed budget informs the development of our proposed budget, and as you know, there will likely be changes to the state budget as the General Assembly conducts its work. Our team is closely monitoring the legislative session for any potential fiscal impacts that we may need to consider. For now, the state budget facts that we have used to craft our budget are as follows: This is the second year of the biennial budget, meaning the governor's proposals came in the form of amendments to the budget that was adopted by the General Assembly last year. The governor's proposed budget amendments, which were released in mid-December, include technical updates based on enrollment, increased sales tax, and Virginia lottery proceed entitlements based on those updated projections, and the continuation of planned 3% pay increase for standard-of-quality funded positions. The governor's proposed budget also directs fundings to community college for additional dual enrollment opportunities, and we continue to develop plans to expand these opportunities for our students. As a result of these changes, we are expecting approximately $2.5 million in additional funding from the Commonwealth as compared with the amended fiscal year 25 HCPS budget. With all of this being said, it is now time to share the details of the proposed fiscal year 26 budget and how it places the highest priority on supporting our students and those who faithfully serve them each and every day. First, I am proud to propose a 3% salary increase for all eligible employees in fiscal year 26, beginning July 1st. This proposal reflects our profound appreciation for their contributions and the impact they make on our students' lives. This proposed increase is a symbol of our enduring gratitude for our employees. In addition to the 3% salary increase, the proposed budget includes approximately $1.4 million in funding to significantly offset the increasing healthcare costs that our employees would otherwise have encountered this calendar year. Essentially, our employees saw their healthcare premiums rise only slightly, and even fall in some cases, beginning January 1st of this school year. This budget captures the balance of the true cost of healthcare based upon the actual claims. I shared earlier how the Olympics theme of convocation paid tribute to the remarkable team that we have here in Hanover County. As you may recall, toward the end of my remarks, I ask attendees to stand based upon their years of service. From our newest teachers just entering our classrooms, to our veteran teachers of more than 30 years, group by group, they proudly stood in recognition of their decades of service to education and to our community. This visible demonstration shows how blessed we are in Hanover County to have a group of educators who are extremely committed for many years to their craft. Recently, a member of our school board stated very simply and succinctly, "They are the backbone of Hanover County Public Schools." To that end, a significant investment in our teacher salary scale is needed as part of our ongoing efforts to demonstrate to our educators that we recognize their value, whether they are in year one or year 30, and to combat the ongoing teacher shortage. Specifically, I am excited to propose $4.5 million in the budget to lift the teacher's salary scale and recognize the deep value that our teachers bring to our school community. This investment would result in an average increase for teachers of 3.8%, in addition to the 3% salary increase, for a total average of 6.8%. It would also begin to create more consistency in the percentage of increase between the steps on the scale, and the proposed budget streamlines the number of scales that we currently use. Why are we focused on this? For our enthusiastic new educators who bring fresh energy into our classrooms, many are burdened by student loans and seek financial stability, meaning they're drawn to school divisions offering higher pay. For our mid-career educators, seasoned professionals who bring valuable experience and mentorship to our newer staff, many face increasing financial responsibilities, such as supporting a family or buying a home. Finally, our veteran teachers, whose expertise is invaluable, have dedicated decades to their craft. We must invest to help ensure that our salary scale is not the reason that we lose that expertise and institutional knowledge. Unfortunately, there isn't a flood of candidates coming into schools these days. National data from this fall showed that the two most common challenges schools said they faced in hiring were a lack of qualified candidates and too few applicants. What does this mean for us? It means that we must do all we can to retain our talented faculty and staff. We recognize that this is not a quick fix, but rather a substantial step in the right direction, and one that communicates loudly to our teachers that you are seen, you are valued, and you are needed here in Hanover County. Across the board, an investment in our educators is extremely important and benefits not only their well-being, but the education our students receive by continuing to recruit and retain top talent. In addition to elevating our teacher salary scale, the proposed budget includes funding for the continuation of a successful incentive program launched during the COVID-19 pandemic for substitutes. Initiated using S.R. Funding, the program offers $500 for every substitute who works 50 or more days per semester, $250 for every substitute who works 25 to 49 days per semester, and $150 for every substitute who works 15 to 24 days per semester. This is paid to these substitutes at the end of each semester. The proposed budget recommends continuing the incentive program as part of our operational budget. This builds on previous investments of the assigned substitutes in recent budgets that continues in this proposed budget. We continue to recognize that our students are in need of additional supports. This is crucial to fostering their holistic development and ensuring their long-term success. Addressing students' emotional and physical well-being creates nurturing environments to help ensure every student thrives and achieves their fullest potential. The proposed budget includes funding for two school psychologist interns. Not only would the addition of these two interns provide our students with additional access to qualified school psychologists, it would allow us to develop our own pipeline for school psychologists, which is a critical shortage area in Virginia that has impacted our hiring efforts here in Hanover. We also work to support our students' physical needs and provide them with access to extracurricular activities to help further improve their overall well-being. As we have discussed this fall, we are beginning to expand our middle school athletic offerings, starting with track and field, the top sport of interest in the student survey that our team conducted. Accordingly, the proposed budget includes funding for four assistant track coaches at the middle school level. The proposed budget expands opportunities for our students with funding for the following: Six slots at Code RVA that were initially funded with one-time funds in fiscal year 25. We have allocated funds in our operating budget to ensure that we continue to have these slots available for students. Tuition increases at Code RVA, Maggie L. Walker Governor's School, and St. Joseph's Villa. And the implementation of a Better Way Athletics, a third-party vendor that will provide professional learning for our coaches, directors of student activities, and school administrators to help make our athletic programs a positive environment for all. This spending plan has a clear vision in mind: supporting our students, those who care for them, and the learning environments in which they learn and grow. It has been my privilege to share with you how this budget accomplishes the first of these two priorities. To share more details about the operating budget, to provide an overview of the school nutrition fund, and discuss how we're proposing to invest in the future of our school buildings, I would like to invite Mrs. Terri Stone to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Pennecoff, Vice Chairman Ikembeary, school board members. So I'm here tonight to share some of the numbers. You can always count on me for that. And so first, we're going to look at the operating fund. Dr. Pennecoff had shared many of the highlights that are proposed in this budget, and now we have an opportunity to see what that looks like in regards to numbers. So when we look, this is our revenues by source, and you see first is our local revenue. That is proposed to increase by $9.8 million. When we look at our plan, the county five-year plan in year two of that, this is an additional $5.1 million over that expected plan. In regards to the state revenue, we see 119, just over 119 million. That's 5.5 million over the adopted fiscal year 2025 budget, but as you know, there was an amended budget. We talked about that last week, and so this is actually only additional 2.5 million. There's some increase in the federal revenue, and then, under other revenue, you see a slight decline. That primarily includes pass-throughs related to dual enrollment, where we receive the payments, and then we remit those to J. Sergeant Reynolds. We need to right-size that number, so we reduced it by 100,000, and then some other small changes. Overall, you see that the total revenue budget is 265.4 million. It's an increase of 15.7 million, or 6.3%. Here's a distribution pie chart that shows our revenues by source. You see that our local revenue is 49.8%. That is leading—that's the funding leader for our proposed budget, where the state revenue makes up 44.8%. I was talking earlier today about how the local portion of the pie continues to grow each year, so I went back and—I had to go back to fiscal year 2020 budget to find a year where the state portion was actually higher. And if I look back in my experience, every year, the state portion was higher, but as you can see, more of the burden of funding—the budget—is being pushed more and more to the local government. Our expenditures by type, our budget is 88.7% personnel. You would expect that. We are a service industry, so that's where you would see most of the dollars in regards to salaries and benefits. That is down slightly by six tenths of a percent, and some of that is related to that state budget amendment. We're looking adopted to adopted as opposed to amended to proposed—or amended—adopted to proposed. If we look at our expenditures by function, you can see that instruction makes up 79.7% of that, as compared to—you've got the technology, operations, transportation, and admin attendance and health. I have shared this before, but the Department of Education defines these categories for us. We cannot drop certain expenditures into categories, and at the end of each year, we produce an annual school report that reports out actual expenditures based upon these same categories. So that makes up most of the details on our operating fund. Next, we have our school nutrition fund. It totals, as proposed, $10.3 million. We do see an increase in state funding and USDA-donated commodities. There's increased food and supply costs, those inflationary impact—are impacting the cost of those. And then a 3% salary increase for all eligible employees. When we look at the revenues listed here, you can see the comparison to the adopted budget. Sales and other revenue are proposed at $5.5 billion. It's an increase of 800,000, but that line item also includes a reserve for revenue. And what that means is that if the final state budget comes in higher, we have an appropriation to accommodate that. So 325,000 of that is related to that reserve. We also have state funding, a very miniscule increase there, and then federal funding, an increase of almost 300,000. Overall, the revenue is going up 1.1 million, or 12.1%, but it does include that reserve. That reserve also has an expenditure side, and it cannot be touched or spent unless revenue is received in excess, and then we would bring forth an amendment to appropriate that to a particular line item. When we look at expenditures by type for the school nutrition fund, you can see it's listed there, salary and benefits, 4.8 million, which is a decrease of 117,000. Your first thought was—I thought we were going to have a 3% pay increase, and I would expect this number to go up. However, with the opening of Ashland Elementary School, and we're no longer operating a cafeteria in Henry—at Henry Clay, we were able to save several positions, a manager position, and five other part-time positions. So overall, even with the 3% pay increase, it's a reduction overall. You can see that the operating is projected to increase by 1.2 million, or 28.9%, but 325,000 of it is that reserve that I talked about. The capital, there's a $10,000 capital budget proposed, with an overall change of 1.1 million, or 12.1%. So next, we're going to talk about our capital improvement plan. This, again, is a very similar development process as to what you, Dr. Pennecoff, presented for the operating budget. We had planning meetings with you, asked you to help us in ranking some of the requests associated with the capital improvement plan. There are annual safety audits. We had meetings with—between the school and county administration to talk about what funding is available for these one-time projects. We talked about the continuation of the technology plan and the importance of that. The facility study, that was refreshed in 2021. And then there's a 10-year model where we're looking out, and we're also working with the county to understand what are their 10-year assumptions for debt and for funding some of these projects. So first, here are some of the renderings of Battlefield Park, Beaver Dam, and also, you see the Washington Henry shown there. And Justin Mattingly told me I need to show a lot of excitement. I don't think I'm meeting his expectations, but I will continue anyway. I told him, "We accountants are not good at that." So we will continue on, but what is very exciting, and just a big deal for all of us, is the expansion of the trade school. That is in the first year— That is in the first year of the CIP, fiscal year 2026, at 8.5 million. And I can tell you, getting a project of that size in year one funded is very exciting. That's wonderful that the county worked with us, identified that funding, and offered it to us, so we are certainly very thankful to them for that. Also, as part of the CIP, we formally identify that campus-style elementary school that is in fiscal year 2028 as Mechanicsville Elementary School, and that was part of the work that you all did at the October meeting where that was identified. And we bring in the second campus-style elementary school replacement in fiscal year 2030. The third school, when we look at that 10-year funding plan, debt funding plan, is slated for fiscal year 2033, so not too far away. Next, in October, we talked about, excuse me, the need to increase the amount of funding for the school bus replacement and technology plan. All of those plans are included in our current-year CIP, but not funded at the level that we feel is necessary. So you can see here that we've increased the funding in fiscal year '27 through '29 for the school bus replacement, and then added fiscal year 2030. We identified a funding need of 5.9 million over the next five years, and this increases by 3.3 million. So it doesn't address all of the need, but we're certainly making progress from where we are today. Similar discussion for the technology plan. You see that we've increased, we've increased the funding in fiscal years 2027 through 2029. When we met with you in October, we identified a need of 9.5 million. This is an increase of 4.8 million. We're making progress, but that is a discussion that will probably start next year's CIP budget to start with that and move forward. So this list is, list your funding sources for the entire CIP. You see that in the beginning, it starts with cash funding, which is the county transfer, the county transfer assignment. We discussed that back in October, that those are funds that exceed our typical return back that are assigned by the county, and they are then committed to a future capital improvement plan. So this demonstrates us using all of those funds that are currently identified over the next five years. You see that the county transfer cash-funded project in fiscal year 2026, 8.5 million. That is for the trade school. And then the final line is the debt funding in each of those future four years. So what does that mean on the expenditure side? This is a summary of all the projects that are listed, and in your budget document that was at your place when you arrived, we have a detailed listing by project types and by school. So this is a summary of those, but you can actually drill down for each school to see which projects are listed. You can see that first, we list those cash-funded projects, school buses, technology plan. The things you see there have a useful life of 20 years or less. Below that are the debt-funded projects. In order to use debt as a funding source, then you have to ensure that the useful life of the capital asset is as great or greater than the payback of the debt. So that's why the projects are identified in that way, and you can see that overall, the grand total listed there, which I'm struggling to see, is 139.8 million. So this is your summary of all funds, just to give you a snapshot of what it looks like. Our operating fund, as proposed, is increasing by 15.7 million, or 6.3%. The School Nutrition Fund is 1.1 million, or 12.1%. You see the subtotal there because that represents all of your operating funds. Next is, we're bringing in the total for the Capital Improvement Plan, which has a reduction of 72.7 million. And that's because in the current year, we have funding for the Beaver Dam Elementary School replacement versus renovation. So there was additional funding that was included in the current year, and then also funding of 45 million for Washington Henry Elementary School. So since last year was such significant funding for those schools, this year, you can see that reduction. So overall, when we look at all funds, it's a reduction of 55.8 million, or 16.1%. That's a tough number to look at, because again, the Capital Improvement Plan are one-time projects. That's why the subtotal of the operating funds really is, makes more sense. Finally, we're going to take a look at our next steps. So we will be back next week for the proposed public hearing of the superintendent's budget. February 11th, we will be with you looking for approval of the budget, and then it transitions from the superintendent's proposed budget to the school board approved budget. The school board approved budget is then slated to be presented to the Board of Supervisors on February 19th. The Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on April 2nd, and then on April 9th, the Board of Supervisors are scheduled to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget. Once we understand what their final adoption is, and potentially, some things could have happened with the state budget during that time, then we will be, come back to you on May 13th, looking for approval of a fiscal year 2026 adopted budget. And at that time, we would also present any amendments that may have transpired from your approved budget to your adopted budget. And so next, Dr. Penikoff.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the school board, I would like to thank you for your profound support of our schools and for your consideration of tonight's proposed budget. We greatly look forward to collaborating with you in the coming weeks and months as we work together on a budget that balances fiscal responsibility with the resources needed to provide exceptional opportunities for our students, staff, and the community. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any questions at this time.
There it is. Thank you, Dr. Penikoff. Thank you again, Ms. Stone. Any quick questions from any board members? Okay, and we will be back in a week at 6 o'clock? Correct. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
Yes, I'd like, like to make a motion to enter closed session in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion of Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body, and Section 2.2-3711A2, Discussion of Disciplinary Matters, or Any Other Matters That Would Involve the Disclosure of Information Contained in a Scholastic Record Concerning Any Student of the School System.
And can I have a second?
Second.
And how is the vote? All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. We are now in closed session.
And in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash thirty seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hanover County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, we have a motion and a discussion. I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Mr. Coleman, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think, uh, Mr. Coleman again. Mr. Martin. Thank you all.